You got me all, I just realized executive wasn't the first thing. I was over for a clamp. Do we have a need for executive this evening?
So there is one on the bottom.
Thank you.
There's one on the bottom, but it's already on the agenda, so.
So don't have to adopt it, like, I guess that's.
As long as you adopt the agenda, it's on it, so.
Okay. I feel like we just didn't do that before, okay.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, it's on you, Joe. Didn't miss much.
No.
Just a message on your answering machine, that's all.
And then we're gonna add two things to amend the agenda. Gearbox replacement and the OCCUD appointment of rep. We have a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the meeting minutes of March 28th? April 5th? Liquor board minutes of April 5th? We're just gonna leave everything to sign at the end with the orders if that's okay with everybody.
Fine, let me.
Okay, town manager report.
All right. So we've submitted a Vtrans Class 2 structures grant to replace a cover at the intersection of Oxbow and Ajur Road, so we'll hear about those probably in another month or two. Facilitated a meeting with Vtrans and Fessin O'Neil on April 6th to discuss the Route 7 segments and ask what we could do to assist with the projects. I do think we could be beneficial with the right of way process and explaining the scope of the projects and what it would look like after completion. I'm hoping we've started a good communication process and then continue with all the entities and hopefully we can get the word around town. Attended a VLCT Board of Commissioners meeting on April 7th. That really wasn't much exciting, it was mostly actuarial reports that I'm sure you guys don't want to hear. Was asked to, this is kinda neat actually, I was asked to attend a Senate Committee hearing on the need for federal infrastructure funding. There are a handful of municipalities testifying and showing the need for water and sewer grant funding to upgrade all of our aging infrastructure, so hopefully we see some positive results. I think they were trying to get a bill together to send to DC to get funding for, you know, what we're gonna be doing on here very soon with water and wastewater, so hopefully. Chad and I looked at a portion of the village sidewalks that are gonna be repaved and came to the conclusion that removing all of the old asphalt, prepping the base is needed for the entire section. And Wilk, I actually talked to Tim again today at Wilk too, and they're planning on paving once school ends, so we'll start prepping here pretty soon to get those ready. And attended the April 12 Chittenden Reservoir Emergency Action Plan, otherwise known as Creep. It's a horrible. At the Vtrans offices in Mendon. There'll actually be a siren testing on May 9th for their, how they, if we have a breach in the Chittenden Dam, so there will be notice going out of the siren testing from Green Mountain Power, because they own the dam, to the folks that are in the floodway basically, or the flood zone. We also discussed flood inundation mapping and the possible need to add the Otter Creek Corridor north of the Proctor Dam to the maps, because that's sort of where it stops with the flood, but, you know, at some point, we're gonna be dealing with it here. There's not a lot of residents down like on Depot Hill, but we do have some infrastructure there that could, we'd probably have to close down or shut off. And I guess from the time the dam would break, which I guess it happened years ago.
Spillway.
It's about two and a half hours before.
Already seven.
You must remember it, Joe.
Before it hits like downtown in Rutland, so we have some time. And then Ann, she attended a Capitol Planning Forum, put on by the Bond Bank. There's quite a bit of stuff in there, so we've been trying to send her to a lot of the bond and grant seminars, which has been great, because she's really, she's just sucking it all up like a sponge, which is awesome. But they did talk about, a lot of it, like the Vtrans was there, they talked about transportation resilience planning and just various other entities, ANR was there, the Bond Bank, the League, USDA. And then they talked about the municipal planning grants and the municipal energy resilience plan, which I'll have more at the next meeting on that, on qualifications and things, there's a little process there. And we have a grant in with the RPC, and we're waiting on how we rate for grant opportunities, so there's still another process we have to do to go through it for. We did find out though that like it won't cover, like the library, it has to be a municipally-owned building, so maybe this one for energy, which would be good.
Is this the only one we submitted with that initial paperwork?
I believe so, it's the only one I've found so far, so. Yeah, there was, Ann had, she was at another one earlier this week on that too, that was put on by the league that was basically just reiterating that, you know, there's still a lot of stuff going on in regional planning commissions on that, so. And another thing with funding too, we spoke with Misty Zingali at USDA this morning to just get some ideas on how we want to move forward with funding for the water and sewer infrastructure on, you know, the Route 7 segments, so. I mean, she suggested that, there's a couple other things we want to do, there's actually someone we want to talk to to look at our rate structuring too for water and sewer, to see how we are in line. I did this in another place and it worked out really well, so it's a good learning tool for Ann and I and certainly to share with the board, but, you know, they'll really just look at our rates, see how the financing would affect them. Hopefully we can get some debt forgiveness on, if we do USDA, there's usually debt forgiveness that's based on what our median income is on the, based on the 2020 census, so I think we qualify, but well, there are more to come on that, obviously. We're trying to get our ducks in a row way early on this and, you know, just get the funding in place, so we're ready to go. I guess that's really all I have tonight.
Okay.
Oh, I threw a couple things in here, just, I know, I think Mark had asked something about the Otter Creek Communications District on what, where they were, so I have the minutes from the last meeting that I threw in there, and I did attend the one tonight. And then a couple other things was, Vtrans is looking at putting some different signs on bridges now, so if you see them out there, they're doing emergency vehicle weight limit signs on bridges now. Last thing here, there was an article in one of the Rutland Herald papers we get up north, it's called, it's like the Middlebury something, and it had an article on the mosquito district on spraying, and it might be something we want to bring to the mosquito district, because it looks like there could be some other requirements for them to do adulticide. Spraying is the larva, you know, they do the larvicide, that's the part that's the grant, but it looks like there's some changes that might be made with how they're applying adulticide, so we probably might, we might want to ask a mosquito district rep to come here, or a rep, and talk to them about that, to see what's going on, because that might, some people might be wondering why they're not spraying.
I'm one of those reps and I'm trying to rack my brain on what those, what the changes were. I have to go back to my notes on that.
So, there's a new state permit that's required with it, from what it looks like, and it was sort of like, kind of waived for quite some time, but, I don't know, this is the only thing I've seen on it, so hopefully we hear more about it. I mean, I know they're always under the microscope with, you know, certain entities from colleges and stuff, so.
I believe this is because they updated their rules, the Department of Agriculture, on spraying.
Yeah.
Now they have to do.
Okay.
That's what I think it is, because they just did it for the first time since the 90s.
Yeah, yeah, that seemed like there was a big.
So they're on the warpath to get all this stuff taken care of.
So, but I'm sure people are gonna ask if, you know, we have a wet, so far it's not too wet, but if we have mosquito inundation and they're not out there spraying.
Yeah, I'll write myself a note to ask Steven to come, because he's been going to those meetings for a long time, he's very well read and all this, so he can maybe explain that to us.
I guess one thing I wanted to bring up, that thing from the CUD, they're not, now they're maybe 2024 when they start doing some of the actual work, according to what I read in that, correct?
So I attended the meeting tonight, just because Tony actually had, he's put in his resignation for us, because he's, it looks like he might be moving for a job.
Okay.
So I just sat in there tonight and it was a pretty short meeting, so I didn't, I didn't really ask any questions, I just wanted to see where they were at, so. I'll start pushing them, you know, or not pushing them, but inquiring about how things are going and what the build out is. I know it's a process for them, like, because it's like anything else, you know, you've gotta get engineering involved and project management and funding, and it sounds like they're not gonna look for any funding from towns now that.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I read.
We won't have to use any ARP funds for that.
So that's pretty cool, you know, that there's that much money that's going into these, I think that's why these districts were created anyway, so they could receive all this grant money that was coming in from the Fed, so.
I agree. Oh, and I do just want to mention that Butch Shaw did call me to tell me that Dave did a great job representing the town up in Montpelier, so just wanted to mention that. All right, any select board member remarks? I guess I just gave mine.
I've got a couple. I'm off next week. We told Rula we'd go up and look at that road, so we probably should.
Yep.
Before we leave tonight, discuss when we want to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, we said we would, so.
Yep, and the other thing is, and we've sort of talked about this before, but it seems how I almost got hit over the weekend again, where the truck route comes through. People don't understand the truck, if you're coming from Omia, they don't understand the truck route goes right, they think it's a straight shot out West Creek, and they fly through there. So I don't know if we need a sign that says, you know, "Left turn, yield to oncoming traffic", or something, because it's, I mean, numerous times I've almost been hit, it was really close this weekend. This woman was just flying through, and she thinks the road's straight, and it isn't, it turns.
Yeah.
West Creek is the other side of the underpass, and it's at that corner, but that in the middle is the truck route. So I don't know, you know, maybe talk to Chad.
Yeah, no, that's a good time, and it is tricky, and I thought that a couple weeks ago, that I wonder if there's something like 2-1 for the lost trucks that go down your way too that.
Well, there is.
Going to Route 7.
Well, we had, at one point, we had a sign, a big sign that said "Omia", and then there were some people in town got offended, so we had to take that down, so.
Okay.
Look me.
Maybe they forgot they're offended, put it back up and see what happens.
Maybe. But yeah, it's, it's good.
Yep.
The biggest problems that I find over there actually is when you make the right, if you're coming from Omia, you make the right to go under the train trestle, people go flying around that corner, or they cut that corner tight, I know it's got striping out there, but they don't swing out, they just make the turn quite a few times. I'm in, you know, underneath the trestle, and here comes a vehicle, and then they're looking at you like.
You're the idiot, yeah. I've seen that too, so, you're right.
I think maybe if we can, look at getting a convex mirror or something, so we can actually see if somebody's coming or not.
That's not.
Those are actually not recommended anymore.
Oh, really?
If Vtrans kind of frowns on those mirrors, yeah, so.
Do you know why?
I don't, I can certainly.
Because they work, number one, because there's one in my driveway, otherwise I can't see around the corner.
I think there's some confusion with them, so, but, yeah, that whole area is a little tricky when you got trucks going through.
I got one down in my driveway, so I know they work. Without it, I'd be getting hit all the time.
All right.
I've got something, Alicia.
Okay, yeah.
So Alicia, Dave and I attended the Outback Acres Field Day.
Yes.
There was 20 people in attendance and eight of them were lawyers.
I have not heard one good comment about that.
Nope.
Nobody.
Just to let you know that we were there to witness it. Even the guy doing the soils had an attorney with him, so it was.
The only other comment I'd make about the same thing was, I had one of the neighbors tell me that he was definitely against it, and they sounded like all the neighbors were in favor of it.
Yeah, I know.
I'm like, no, that's not what I'm hearing now.
So. What's that?
The big solar field.
Ow.
Yeah, well, furnace.
Well, furnace road.
So, I was actually, talked with the PUC quite a bit right after our meeting, because I noticed that we weren't showing our party status, which was concerning me, and they got it straightened out, and then they must have opened the deadline for request for motion to intervene, because now I'm getting the updates too.
Oh, okay.
And like more people in town have actually applied for the motion, so.
Well, that's good, because.
Yeah, I think, the guy told me they received a ton of calls right before we went out and did the site visits, so.
I know, it's, communication from them was definitely not good, leading up till.
I did receive the big packet a couple days ago, so it's on my desk.
Oh, okay.
If anyone wants to come in and look at, you know, the whole packet from their attorney for the solar application, it's here, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Any public comment? Okay.
Ann did add like all these little letters in that we sent out this week, just to let you know, they're just.
Did you have something?
I had a question, I guess a technical question. When it says like weight restriction, I understand normally for a local delivery, a tractor trailer can go through, but what about regular, daily, back and forth triaxle chip trailers and triaxle logging trailers going over the bridge on my end of Fire Hill Road? Is that okay for them to do that, or, I mean, like I said, I don't want to get anybody in trouble, I don't really care, but if I know triaxle, they're pulling more than 80,000, or they're weighing more than 80,000, so is their daily running gonna end up having some kind of negative result on the bridge that we're later on gonna have to flip the bill for?
Want me to comment on that?
Yes, because I don't know the answer.
So no, they shouldn't be on the weight restriction. It's just like when we post roads in the spring, you know, for no through traffic, so. Some of these, some of these companies, like we had, one of the solar companies actually called to ask if we still had our roads posted, so some of the trucks would get special permission from Chad, if, you know, if they're working up there or whatever, but as far as thoroughfare, they shouldn't be on those roads, especially.
In fact, I think it was yesterday morning, somebody went by about 4 o'clock in the morning, I'm guessing moving machinery, don't want to be seen, so coming in the dead of night.
Yeah.
I used to do it, I'll admit it, years ago. We threw tires down. Marked up the pavement and whatnot, but.
Yeah.
I just, because it's a daily, multiple times a day, I just was kind of curious about that. I know there are special exemptions and whatnot, but.
But if it's, I'm guessing it's probably posted as like a 26,000 pound or 28,000 pound road? I'd have to see what road it is.
I don't think there's actually a weight limit, it's just no tractor trailers.
Yeah.
And I know usually, the exception to that normally is if it's a local delivery that happens every once in a while.
Right.
But trucks going over it multiple times a day.
Right.
Kind of made me question.
Yeah, even if you're posting a road, you know, for like you're doing the spring, you still allow like garbage trucks, fuel trucks.
Right.
Or if someone's getting a delivery, but as far as going through, like no through trucks, that's definitely not okay, so I can talk to chief about that if we've got, if we've got some issues. On Fire Hill?
They're doing some logging somewheres up there, I'm guessing it's probably, if you go past me on Fire Hill, which I'm on the Omia end, and you hit the farm on the corner, and you hang around to the left, over there last year, they were clearing out some land over there, and I don't think anything ever moved, so I'm guessing they're doing the moving now.
Most of the loggers will call us, but I'll check and see if Chad knows if anyone's called us to ask to drive log trucks, most of them are pretty good about it, but.
Yeah.
We'll check.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're right, it does cost us money in the end if.
Right.
Trace of forest.
That's that some reason.
Almost around gagliardis up there, maybe. Them logged out in a while, but.
All right, let's skip old business for now and get to new business, so we can talk about the Crown Point Road Association dedication. From the Pittsburgh Historical Society would like, our Crown Point is so.
Everybody's looking at me.
Yeah, you'd like to speak, please.
I'm Barry Griffith from Shrewsbury and also the Crown Point Road Association, and which is interested in the Crown Point Road, which passed through Pittsburgh among other places. And back at the beginning of the 20th century, 100 years ago, the DAR placed a lot of markers along the route, including one here in Pittsburgh, which they put on Depot Street, I guess you call it, down on this side of the Otter Creek, and we're pretty sure now, actually, the Crown Point Road, when it went through Pittsburgh, was on the other side, so Bill Powers has been saying for years, that thing doesn't belong there, so. So a couple of years ago, we dug it up with help from your road crew, Pittsburgh Historical Society for a while, and again, with help from your society, it got moved over to Liz, Liz Willis's and Josh, what is it, Towns Place, very near the Payne Tavern that Bill can tell you all about. So that, we did that this winter, and talking this winter, we said, gee, there are, you know, there was a dedication ceremony 100 years ago, we ought to do a little rededication ceremony, so our association and talked to your Pittsburgh Historical Society, and we got hold of the DAR, and we all thought that might be a nice idea, and we talked to Josh and Liz, and what worked out best for them was to do this on Sunday, May 7th, we're gonna do it around 1 o'clock in the afternoon. It's not gonna be, we'll probably have a speaker from the DAR, somebody from the Pittsburgh will speak, and probably somebody from our association will speak, and it won't be a very big affair, but I know if this was happening in my hometown of Shrewsbury, I think our select board would want to know about it.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you guys ought to know about it as well, so we got it on the agenda and came in tonight, so thank you for hearing us. We were up there just yesterday, in fact, we wanted to wait and get a sense of what's going on. I'm not sure if you all are familiar where the marker is, it's just before their house, and we wanted to hold the dedication ceremony there, I guess rain or shine, you know, we don't have a rain date. We kind of scoped it out, what we probably are gonna have to do is have people park along the side of the road, probably the north side of the road there, and they're good sightlines, so we can probably have somebody on either end to make sure traffic is aware and goes through if they have to. It's scheduled for 1 o'clock, again, we're probably gonna have three speakers, who'll speak for five minutes or so, and, you know, we'll do the usual hoop to hoop, so. We want you folks to be aware of it and see if you had any questions or input, and invite you to come.
Great, thank you, it's exciting.
We're gonna set up in the field with maybe 20 chairs, so we'll be off the roadway, we aren't gonna be hovering around the monument. We're gonna be out in the field, a little more towards the Willis Town House.
Okay.
So we'll be unobtrusive as possible.
Okay.
And I want to thank the town, anyway, we went through, well, twice, as Barry mentioned, you know, I always wondered, why the hell is that monument on people's road? Well, the town was down there, what, a year, two years ago, and doing some electrical work and putting some electrical stuff, and the monument was in the way. Hey, it's okay, take it out and put it behind the Historical Society, and so it sat there for about a year, and Jim Rowe, who was president of the Crown Point Road Association, borrowed my son's jackhammer, came down, and we took all the concrete off the bottom of the monument and cleaned it up really nice, and then again, Josh Towne came by and said, Josh, let's go out and put it on your property, we know that the Crown Point Road passed to the east of his house. That's what St. Cavali says in his history of Pittsburgh, and it lines up reasonably well with the marker at Hollister Quarry Road and the one down by Gore Bridge. So I think we've got it pretty much right on where it should be.
Great.
So, all right, we appreciate the help that the town has given us, and it's been a nice cooperative effort between society and the Crown Point Road Association. I expect you all to be there.
In regards to the Crown Point Road, my boundary line was Bill Turnovages, grew up together up in there, and there's a spot up in my woods and on some of what was Bill's, is I've always understood it, that was part of the Crown Point Road, and as far as I know, nobody's ever looked at it, and that apparently crossed the Corn Hill Road somewhere, maybe by the town line in that area, but I would be pleased to show anybody some weekend or something, I'd be delighted to show anybody what I have on my land, it's very evident, after you go through the fence, it disappears, because it must have till then fields or, but I'd be more than pleased to take one, two, or a group of people and talk about it.
We're familiar with that, Joe, and it was, there were several versions of the Crown Point Road as time went on, but the original Crown Point Road is what we're talking today for this particular monument, once it, the purpose of it was to connect Charleston, New Hampshire with Crown Point Fort at Crown Point, which existed, and once you came up basically today's 103 or a little to the east of it, you crossed in North Clarendon and stayed on the west side of Otter Creek, all the way up to Crown Point, and this, we're talking 1759, 1760, and then by that time, you know, Pittsburgh was granted along with a bunch of other ones in the 1760s, and then there were variations in the route from then, and the Crown Point Road just followed the old, what they call the Indian Road, which was Otter Creek, so things did progress on. In fact, we've wandered through Dave's property in the past to check it out, so. So we appreciate the support that you've all given us, and, yeah, we'd like to check out what you've got to say.
I may be all completely uninformed, and maybe I'm off on another side trail of the Crown Point Road, but that was always a story that I heard.
You ever hear the story about the Indians having something special up on your property?
Not particularly.
Yeah, I'll have to check that out, Joe.
Yeah, I'll be glad to meet with some of you folks anytime.
Thank you.
Good weather's coming.
Alicia, pertaining to this, if it came to it and we had to sort of monitor the traffic, would that be a problem if we had someone in each end of our line of cars so that traffic would go through one at a time? We're not police officers or anything like that?
Right, right.
So, I mean, is that gonna be an issue?
I don't think so.
It's in obvious interest of safety.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be fine, yeah.
It'd be there, what, half hour, hour at the most?
Probably an hour at the most, I would assume, so we're not gonna be there, and it's a Sunday.
Yeah.
Maybe everybody would be praying somewhere else, I don't know, but I just wanted to make sure we were within our right to say, stop, let that lane go.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Probably just notify chief that it's going on.
Just to let him know.
Oh, you already wrote down, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Pray for some.
I know, I'm nervous now, because I feel like May 7th, I hope my calendar's free, it's like nagging me that I already have something that day, but hopefully not, because I want to go. I do belong to the Crown Point Road Association, so. Okay. Outsourcing of payroll services.
So Ann and I have been doing a little research on the possibility of outsourcing payroll.
Thank you.
And so there's, we've got two quotes in here, one from ADP and one from Sterns. Sterns actually used to work for Nemrick, so that's a good kind of connection there, because Nemrick will still be part of it, but just wanted to throw this in front of you guys tonight, see what you think, and if it's something that I'm in favor of. I think with changes in payroll and stuff that happens all the time, it's not bad to have someone that just does it to take our payroll over, maybe save some issues.
From a standpoint of finance, would it cost us money or save us money, or would we be breaking, or we don't know, really?
I think it, well, it would cost us money to do the service, Joe, but I think it would save us money in time. You know, I think the expense for, you know, what it does here would help.
Takes a little research to figure that one out.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's something we kind of figure out, you know.
Yeah, how much time is involved with our people here?
Yeah.
The company I worked for, we switched to ADP about three, four years ago after doing it in-house for 40 years.
Yeah.
No question, the best thing we did.
Really?
Cost-wise, the actual record keeping for your taxes is excellent. It's available immediately. It saves a pile of time on that.
Oh, that's good to know.
So I, I think this is a really logical idea.
And it's a direct hit on your account. You don't have to go to the bank. You're nine forty-one.
If we did that, I would encourage to look at a bi-weekly rather than a weekly.
Okay.
Because I think it is less expensive.
Half the price.
It is, it is half the price.
And there's really no, most everything runs bi-weekly.
Yeah.
Anything now. So if, if we're gonna do it, I would say let's go to one shot.
Yep.
Yeah, I think if we gave, you know, employees ample time to sort of prepare for that bi-weekly, that I, I think everyone in the building here would like to, not, I mean, you guys, but, you know, everyone's down the hallway. We're all, we're all in favor of it because it is, it's, it's a weekly thing that's, you know, it is not.
A lot of time.
Well, yeah.
So.
I'd definitely be in favor if it's a bi-weekly.
I know.
Oh, no, bi-weekly, I, yeah, because that's the way the rest of the world pays people.
So. And I, I think the, with the least ADP, uh, any employee can access all our information online at any time with the passwords and everything. It saves, saves a pile of time. So whichever one you think.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with ADP, but I know you and I talked about it before. I mean, I know Sterns well because as you see, they listed, you know, one of the towns down here that I used to work for. So, um, and I think we were one of their first ones and it's really was, was, it was beneficial. So, um.
I work with them too, Dave, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, cool, great. Um, yeah, so I, you know, if you guys wanna just to move forward with it, we could certainly, you know, get this, the word out for bi-weekly and I don't think we're obligated to do a weekly in anything. I'll have to look at the union contract.
Yeah, you'll have to look at that.
But, um.
It might be something we start with our next fiscal year.
We'll change it then.
Yeah.
It's time to get everything.
Yeah, we'll change it. The contracts coming up.
Well, yeah, I think that that would fall under like administrative stuff anyway where we could do it. So.
I think it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the majority of us are in favor of bi-weekly, so.
Are we ready for a motion?
Well, I don't really get, so that, because it's different, which is?
The more, yeah, I couldn't figure out the price.
Yeah, I'm confused. I mean, the Sterns one is very clear. That'd be, um, you know, for bi-weekly, it's fifty-four hundred dollars, but I don't really get the ADP.
Yeah, I didn't. So I think ADP's cheaper. I mean, we could, we could, I mean, they did the weekly rate in here, but we could certainly ask them about bi-weeklies, but I, I think it's gonna be the same. I think Ann asked them that, but I will, I can confirm that definitely.
Yeah, okay.
But, um, yeah, I mean, if you guys, you know, we can just move forward with it and get the number and let you guys know and see where we.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I make a motion that we move to an outsourced payroll.
Sounds good.
Do you think that ought to be determined?
Thank you.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that?
I was just wondering whether we would save anything somewhere else by not doing it ourselves.
I think so, Joe.
And might make it look better in my mind.
Yeah.
So a little more information.
Okay.
As to just how it would actually work because my son does that with our payroll.
Yeah, okay. Well, let me, let me see, like, I'm sure I could get, you know, a pretty good estimate of what, how much time is, is it has taken us here, um, you know, between Ann and Pat and Helen and Liz. I mean, you've got four people involved with it.
Right.
Me at some point and then Alicia too. So, you know, it's, it's like moving firewood.
The value of the time that could be saved in this, the way it's functioning now might make it look all, all that much better.
Joe, I would bet hourly, we will save on this over what we're doing now.
You probably have a better experience.
It'd be good to know.
Yeah, I know. All right.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Uh, website and email conversion proposal.
So, um, I've had Ann tracking this down too. We, we're having some serious issues with the website we currently have and, as you know, Jackson Willen, who used to do ours, doesn't do it anymore and sold out to a company. We can't even get on and like, been trying to figure out how we can change like the planning commissioners on it and it won't let us do it.
Oh, that's.
So, and it's pretty old. I think it still shows on it as the planning commission. So, um, so, um, and talked to, I forgot the name of it, Jonathan Jizowitz, I believe. Um, so, and all the information's here on what, you know, he, he brought down. It's really not all that bad. I mean, it's like three thousand to set it up, which is pretty common. Um, and then you see there's some annual fees just for which we pay anyway for having email accounts. Um, like the domain registration, that's annual that we'd have to do. Um, WordPress, all that stuff, that's all on there. It's, it's anything we have to do to maintain our websites anyway. So, um.
And with this, will we be able to get in and change it?
Yes, yeah. So probably Ann would be our, our webmaster, I guess is what you'd call her. But as you see, like, they actually broke it down and the total startup is thirty-six hundred dollars. Um, they get it done in one to two months and we have a new, a new website that's functional.
That explains why there was a bunch of old information on there.
Oh, it's terrible.
There's a ton of old information in there.
It's, and, and some days it works, some days it doesn't, you know, because Ann's been able to put some things on it. Like I wanna try to get, all these policies that I keep throwing at you guys, you know, we should have all those on the website and the ordinances and, and all that stuff so that folks can, can at least view them and.
So this is gonna be carried by GoDaddy, is that what I say?
Yeah.
Which is what we talked about way back when we had those ten thousand dollar options for the website. Remember?
Remember that, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I think we get more email addresses through GoDaddy than we have right now too and because, and that's another thing Ann went through and found out we had a bunch that we weren't using and, you know, so she got rid of those, but, um, it would be kinda nice if our email addresses became a little more personable. I've had some people ask like, why isn't your name on your email address? You know, because it just says manager and, oh, it just says clerk treasurer. So just some of those things, um.
Okay.
So what will that end up running? About six hundred a year then? If it's thirty-six hundred to get set up and for the first year or how is that?
Um, let's see here. So we've got thirty-five dollars for annual, um, for domain registration, which we have to do anyway. Uh, hosting fees, two seventy-five, WordPress.
Four hundred.
I thi, I don't know if I have to pay Ann. Oh, it is annual, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, that's about six, well, five, four, six.
Six seventy-five.
Yeah, it'd be under seven, it'd be just under seven hundred bucks there to.
And what are we paying, paying this stuff that we got now?
Did she put it in here? I thought she did.
Obviously too much.
Well, yeah, but.
For what we're getting.
You're not getting anything for it.
I said for what we're getting.
All right, I mean, the problem is we don't have a choice now. We have to update no matter what. We've gotta get something new because the, this one is done. So, I mean, six, seven hundred bucks a year is pretty cheap to do this.
So there's also eight dollar per month for email address.
Yeah, I think we're paying ten now if I remember.
I know, you just save two bucks.
Perfect. Buy more and save.
So probably we're gonna be under, over a thousand or under a thousand.
Yeah, it's reasonable.
I would make a motion to do this.
I'll second it.
We've got a, I mean, we've got trouble with the website back when I was in the planning commission.
No, it's been awful for years, for years.
Much more reasonable.
Any, uh, further discussion on that?
I did.
Oh, okay.
You weren't paying attention.
No, I was.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I think it's, you know, a necessary tool to have now that, you know, it's, that's, that's the way we.
That's a no-brainer, yeah.
Yeah, it's just one of those things that has to be done.
No, agreed.
Yeah.
Maybe it could zoom like some people if they wanna zoom in and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all right, auditor services.
A lot of stuff that you guys say, I don't know. So I know we talked about this in the past, um, with just how maybe displeased we are with the current auditing services and maybe it's time to throw an RFP out, out there to see what.
Definitely.
What the competition is.
I don't think we even have, you even have to say more. I think.
Nope.
Hundred percent. Been a number of us have said that for a number of years.
Oh, I know and you know the reason why, but now I agree with you. It's this year approved.
Yeah.
I think we should do it every three years just because.
Yeah.
And see what happens.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Definitely.
All right, yep, let's do that. And then fuel bid also, try to do every three years?
Did you wanna do a motion on that one?
Oh.
I make a motion, we look into the audit services.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, fuel bid.
So this is another one we talked about, seeing if we wanted to do another one for three year or one year. Um, I know a few of the companies would like to see three-year bids now, um, and it's usually a not to exceed, so it, we, we could benefit if prices go up again or when they go up again.
Tell me how, how we benefit with that, going three? It's gonna be a top end?
So there'd be a top end and there'd be a not to go below and a not to exceed.
Oh, a range.
Yeah.
It's a range. So if it dropped way down, we're kinda screwed, but if it goes way up, we're okay.
My crystal bar right now would say we're not gonna see it trade to a dollar fifty-nine.
I don't think so. Anytime soon anyways.
I think not two years.
Maybe. It'd be good if it did.
I didn't, it's a long time for a bid on.
Yeah, it is.
What's, is there any other benefits to doing it on three years or is just what the companies want?
Um, it's easier to budget.
Yeah, okay.
That's true. We can do one yearly. I don't, it doesn't matter, but, um, it is nice to sort of have a number to go by for a while.
Like to be able to compare a three-year versus a one-year.
I'll just tell you, in past experience, I'm trying to figure out different ways to say this.
Yeah.
It has been beneficial because you have a supplier that knows that they've got guaranteed sales for three years. So that does make a difference. And I think we use some of them here anyway. I think we use Champlain Valley already for stuff though. But, um, you know, you lock in with them and it, it does, because they know that they've got the business too. So I think that's why it's been beneficial.
Okay.
Well, and the other thing is last year we got down to what, two people bid, right?
My comment was maybe it's time to try it at least for a three-year term, see what happens.
Yeah.
If we get bit, we'll know better.
Well, let's, let's see how the bids come in.
Yeah.
Right. Doesn't mean we have to accept any of them.
No, no, you don't. That's what I'm saying. Let's try it, see what they look like.
You don't have to do anything that's what we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Fine with me.
Yep.
Yeah, the question over there.
Is there a possibility of getting a two-year?
Possibility of doing it anyway with them, actually.
Right now, we're at a one-year.
Making a two-year, see what they offer in a way if things change between now and then, you don't end up butt sucking on a bag of lemons for a year.
I'm guessing.
Just in case, you know, the price happens to drop.
I'm, I'm guessing if they're going, if we're going this far ahead, it's gonna be the same at two as it is at three.
Probably.
That's my guess because a lot of these guys are just guessing in the future at that point. A year, a lot of them will buy contracts out that far, but they don't go much more than that.
Well, I've seen them, the ones I've seen, like, you know, they'll give us the prices off, like the Montreal rack versus the Albany rack and some other things in between. So.
And a formula, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it'll probably be similar.
I'll make a motion that we let the bids go out for three years, you know, and we can see what they are.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Painting of the town office.
Exciting.
So I did get quotes from, from two painters. Um, they can start almost immediately. I know we discussed kind of, you know, or here and there on maybe doing some, you know, sections like, and then doing some stuff that, you know, after July 1. Um, so, um, there's, there's two estimates in here and, um, it's pretty much everything except for like the walls that have the weird paper on them, like the hallway, like the ceiling will be done, but the bathrooms won't because they have that, if that texture.
It's almost like wallpaper.
It is, yeah.
But if, they're not in bad shape. They've actually held the color pretty well. Um, but definitely like this room, all the offices.
Yours is gonna stay pink, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe a little brighter pink.
Well, the pink will still be there. You just might not be able to see it.
Oh, okay.
All right, all right.
But, uh, yeah, so I think the paint's been here since the building was built, so it's definitely time. And I know we talked about maybe doing some other things in this room to make it a little more.
This whole room needs a redo.
Select board meeting friendly or any meeting friendly. So I think.
A mess in here.
You know, and if someone wants to be interested in looking at colors, let me know.
Green.
The green room.
So are these, um, exactly the same?
Pretty much, yeah.
And these are the entire.
All the same work?
Entire building other than the goofy wallpapered ones or?
So right, other than the hallway. I know one had the bathroom on it, but, um, that one did.
The goofy wallpaper can't be painted?
Well, it could be. I don't think it needs it though. The ceiling needs it definitely, but I think the, I think that wallpaper is like, held the paint pretty well. They're in pretty good shape, really.
It's in good shape, yeah.
You know? I mean, if we just, if we change our minds after, we could just, you know, do it after, but.
Is it washable?
I'd say it's probably dirty.
Well, I know because it's in the bathrooms, which is gross.
Yeah, well, I think I clean once a week, so.
The walls do.
Even the goofy paper in the bathroom, once you paint it, at least it'd be clean and fresh.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
So who was the, I know there was a little bidder, somebody named Bryant, who?
Brian Coolidge.
Oh, Brian Coolidge, okay. I didn't.
I know there's a little last name on there.
There's no, yeah, there's no business, there's no anything. He did, he actually gave me his, his liability insurance too, so I do have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But his bid was a sixty-seven fifty?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we give him the bid.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I like the fact she uses California paint too, because I think it's better paint.
That's good paint. Used to sell it. Excellent paint.
All right. Um, oh, poles and base options for Route Seven Bridge.
So this is interesting that they wanted, they wanted you guys to pick the, and I did bring the light option just in case. I think maybe.
I thought we did though.
You'd already picked the lights.
Right, so we picked the light and the rail, but the, they didn't, the poles weren't picked because they wanted to get the light design and then find the poles that match with it.
Oh, okay. I would say we already did the.
Yeah, there's only like thirty different types. So I think.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
So.
If you got pictures, we can like put up on the wall and just throw a dart.
Yeah.
Well, it, it's, it's hard to look here and know what they're gonna look like on the bridge, you know?
It'd be better to do that now before we paint. Better to do that now before we paint.
Well, no, that's what I'm thinking, we're painting the walls anyway.
Why are there so many options?
Well, no, there are a lot of options.
But they don't all look good with this lamp.
No.
Like this one can go.
So I think there's actually, is there four options?
No, no, no.
So you gotta look at the numbers on the top, like they have, like there's the twenty four hundred S B, the seventeen hundred S B.
Four, five, six, seven.
Nine, the nine hundred base, so there's five options, I think.
Prices all the same or there's?
They're not costing us anything.
Yeah, lots of state.
Yeah.
Can't you appoint a study committee to look into this for a few years?
A few years? No, the answer would be no.
Well, the bridge isn't gonna be done for a long time, so.
It better be.
We'll be going through Florence to get to Rutland if it's not.
I don't know about that, we haven't got any bridges that'll hold it either.
Well, that's true.
What do you think, Alicia?
I like this one.
Which one?
Which one's that, what number?
Two hundred S B.
Two hundred S B.
Two hundred S B?
Thirty two hundred S B.
Oh, thirty of these two hundred.
Oh, you know what, they're, they're same exact ones, but one's got a wider base, is what I can.
Yeah, I like the wider base, but.
You do like the wider one?
Yeah, it's more proportion.
Alright, yeah, then that's cool.
We we picked the same top.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think that looks good, that one looks the best with the lamp.
Forty two hundred S B.
Forty two hundred?
Forty two hundred S B?
Yeah. The twenty four, the same thing, although it's got a smaller round base on the bottom.
Just look at the real.
Well, yeah, I guess, cause I'm not finding, it's taking me too long to scroll.
Sixteen inches versus twelve.
With that on top.
It's just the very base.
Green and red go together to me, so.
Well, like the other one's too.
No.
Well, that's, that's.
Yes, too gaudy.
That one looks like a candlestick.
Yeah, I don't like that one either.
Yeah.
This one's more of like a Roman pillar, pillar or whatever.
It'll look nice on it.
All the forty two hundred?
Yeah.
Do you guys wanna make a motion on that just for fun?
I'll make a motion, forty two hundred S B.
Dave second it.
I second it, yeah.
All in favor say aye?
Aye, gosh, we work well together.
When I can hear ya.
You guys are incredible.
Expect to be looking at the road, not the lamppost.
Yeah, let's hope.
Hopefully I'll see the road better with the lamp on.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know what the poster got to do with it, but.
It holds the top up.
Alright, and then, so appointments for Rutland Regional Board of Commissioners, we just need, which is Dave and Donna, we just need to sign?
Yeah, it's just the annual, that's it.
Okay.
Well, you can, you can make a motion to appoint them if you want and.
Still want the job?
Yeah, I mean, I I like it, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, no, cool.
I enjoy meeting them, I'll do it for a little while longer on our march.
Yep, okay.
They didn't have a meeting this month that like got canceled.
Oh.
And then on the other side of the page is the regional transportation one.
Oh, which is meeting?
Yeah.
So.
Make a motion to appoint both of them.
Okay. Second?
It would be inappropriate.
That's why I was looking, I was looking down here for a second.
Oh, second, there you go.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, paving bid results.
Wasn't really a bid, I guess, it was more of a quote, but, so the, the only two paving companies that we have left to give numbers were Pike and Wilk and.
About, about twenty grand.
It's quite a difference.
Quite a difference, yeah.
Is there any comparison between the work they're gonna do?
So Chad and I actually got the calculator out and looked at, you know, what the tonnage is, which is, it's close. So if you look at both projects, like Pike has more tonnage on Arch Street. No, they're milling more on Arch Street, sorry, so, but the price is less, so they're they're two fifty per unit for plating, and they're 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 seventy five dollars and forty cents a ton for asphalt, where Wilk was three sixty seven for cold plating and seventy six ninety two for asphalt, so I talked to Tim today and he was kinda shocked at the difference too, Tim from Wilk, so, yeah, Pike gave us a really good number. Both of them came down and looked at everything and, so, and Wilk's still gonna do our sidewalks.
Yep.
Um, but Whipple Hollow, we'll see if we get the class two grant, that's what, so that's the, you know, the numbers for that, so, you know.
Are we anywhere near what our projected budget was for this? We had a, we had a projected budget for paving this year and as these figures come.
Oh, I see what you're, yeah.
So if we only did, so like I said, Whipple Hollow is gonna be a grant only if we get the class two paving.
Yeah.
So Arch Street was ninety four thousand dollars. I can't remember what the, I guess I could do the math, on what Orchard Hill was. I don't even have my calculator, so it's seven hundred and twenty three ton.
I don't remember what we budgeted for paving.
I think, I think there's two forty in it, does that sound about right?
So what's the grant?
The grant's two hundred thousand.
So we're on.
We'd be under budget.
If we get the grant.
If you get the grant.
It will be, so.
You don't get the grant, we're not doing that.
I would, I would make a motion that we go with Pike Industries, and this is contingent on us getting the grant, as far as Whipple Hollow.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
And grant you're talking about, David?
So it's the Vtrans Class Two paving grant, every year they put out applications for structures and paving on class two highways.
Gotcha.
And they're up to, they're up to two hundred thousand dollars per project.
Sweet.
So, yeah, it's a good, it's a great program, actually.
Alright.
We don't know whether we're gonna get the grant yet or not.
Right.
No.
But the motion is contingent on.
Contingent on the grant, yeah, we don't get the grant, we don't do it.
Right, yeah, we just do what's in our budget, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, preferred, preferred solar site planning, which we desperately need, so.
We do.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we kinda had this conversation as we were walking away from the field last Wednesday, and so Regional Planning Commission and their, and their plan has a pretty good, pretty lengthy section on solar siding, it's tied in kinda with the energy portion. Here's another one from another town that I might have helped on, that's just something to look at if, if, you know, but I think one of the, one of the things to sort of stop what's happening now with, I mean, there's a lot of people that are pretty upset about this current project that we looked at, that if we had some types of, not real drastic, like preferred siding, but that it, you know, can't be seen from certain roadways, can't be on Primag, things like that. I can certainly, you know, make copies of this, it's pretty lengthy, but, you know, I could, if you guys wanna take a look at it, but I I just, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the town feels about this, but I think something needs to be done with the town plan, cause it's.
Should this go down via the planning commission?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we asked them to start, start on this.
So I think we should give a recommendation, maybe some thoughts.
Yeah.
Dave just pointed out, or maybe look at our industrial zone land, rather than some of the other.
Well, that's, I know, I totally forgot about the Route Three one, but you see, they got that, um, all partitioned off.
Have they started it now?
They, yeah, they're well, yeah, very preliminary, but it's all, the area's kinda marked out and.
I think the time is right, we've put our portion, I think we're almost even with what the state recommends that we have.
That's what I'm saying, we're.
Certainly got a lot of them.
We're full up.
John did do that for me when I was on the planning commission, and if all the ones we had approved at that time were in, were out there. At our requirements from the state, so I think it's time to.
Yep.
And I think those are good suggestions.
But the, the whole, you know, I, the, part of what I take issue with this is the whole Primag thing, cause just because it's Primag soil doesn't mean it's Primag land.
No.
So, you know, if it's some goofy little meadow that is useless to farm, yet it's Primag soil.
Yeah.
So there's, I mean, I bring this up down at Regional, you know, that it's just cause it says it's Primag, doesn't mean it's Primag.
It doesn't seem that that's playing a factor, I, I mean, that's what I gathered from Wednesday.
Well, I don't think it is, because what they, what they do is they figure they're building on it.
Yeah.
But in twenty five years, it's gonna just disappear and it's gonna go back to being what it was, so that's the way they're getting away with using this Primag land.
I guess they're not stripping this one anyway, they're looking at what, they're looking.
Well, they'll strip where they put roads in, that's what they do, if they're putting a road in, they strip it, they pile it, and they gonna bring, supposedly gonna bring it back after.
One of the, one of the other things too that would be good to throw in, like, I think that's the perfect example of the salvage yard right up the road here. That's, you know, looking at a brownfield site or any of those industrial type areas or old parking lots or something, I know we don't have, you know, we didn't have a lot of those, but
I know.
That's, that's kinda preferred.
And the Rutland map is not one I don't think we wanna work with, the planning commission looked at that before, and what the Rutland Planning Commission had made up for a map on preferred solar was not something I think we're gonna be interested in.
Okay.
It's a lot of places where you wouldn't wanna see it, so.
That's so we can like, you know.
So I think the planning commission might be the ones to determine how to do that.
Yeah.
Cause boy, that one on Furnish Road, you drive that, you're gonna, everybody's gonna, once that goes in there, you're, we're gonna get a lot of complaints.
Yeah, well, that Route Three one as well.
Yep.
That's a beautiful piece of land there too.
It is, it is, both.
So would you like me to contact Kevin and on?
Yeah, please.
No?
We need to make a motion.
You're talking about the crazy lady with the, where the lady with the cows on the dirt.
Oh, you want a motion that we refer that to the
Yeah, okay.
Planning Commission?
Right.
So moved.
Cows that got out of the dirty, that place?
Too busy, Tom.
I know.
Right past Bob Fishes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
I made the motion.
I'll second Tom's motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Well, no, we were trying to figure out.
The motion is to recommend the planning commission start, start working on preferred solar siding, and we had a second, so, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let's get the barn door shut.
I know, alright, let's.
Get out.
Jeez. Bunch of them already been let out.
I think so.
Solar panels up on, where the ducks are swimming up in Pamienville's Creek.
That's where they ought to be.
No, they should.
That way the mosquitoes can stay under them.
Where they should be.
Yeah. Most mosquitoes wouldn't be able to get out of the water.
We're gonna have to change our slogan from.
Alright, let's go back to old business. Alright, we have a special appropriations policy. Bye.
We're gonna leave you to your old business.
Yes, no, that's. Good night.
For last.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause then we're just gonna sign everything at the end, so, so that's why I skipped over that. Alright, we have special appropriations policy, purchasing policy, personnel policy, trustees of public funds, investment policy, and fraud prevention policy.
So, the appropriations policy.
That's the only ones we.
That's a hard one to say fast. These are, yeah, these are the ones I, we started or brought to you, to you folks. The only one that we've made any changes to, or that I said I was, were going to, was for the personnel policy. Just to add like the on-call and the call-in stuff in that should be part of, you know, it's part of the union contract too, but it'd be good to have that in the, in the personnel policy as well, I think. You know, it's still a working document, so if you guys wanna look it over again and see what you think and go back to it, or.
I read through all of them.
I did.
I could not find.
They all, they're fine.
The only thing I found was on the, um, purchasing policy. We're cutting the town manager off at seven thousand dollars, but we don't kick in till ten.
Till ten.
So you got a three thousand dollar no man's land.
Oh.
Yeah, that's not good.
I didn't pick that up.
So I think that was what was on the one that was prior to me getting there. I'm fine with you guys kidding me ten if you want, and that, I mean, everything's coming here anyway. And even if we had any, I mean, the only things, kinds I could think where we would have to do something like that would be if we had some major breakdown at wastewater water or if equipment went, but if we did equipment, you know, it'd still be probably coming before the board before we even did anything, cause it's a process anyway, you know?
And you can always pull the board too, on that kinda stuff.
On the other hand, on the other hand, you could call for an emergency meeting anytime you want to.
I gotta be honest with you, I don't ever remember even having to do anything like that, you know, cause it wasn't, if it was, yeah, if it was something that was emergency related, it'd be different, but if it was just kinda standard operating stuff, we just wait for the board, you know? I don't think, like, some of the things I think of that, like when we, we had that, you know, the, the stormwater permit that we had to do for the state that they sent us the invoice on like March thirty first and it was due on April first, and it's like, it was like eleven hundred bucks, and okay, well, we kinda can't wait for that because we don't wanna, I'd you know, I'd rather have a good report card with them for that kinda stuff, so, you know, those kinda things, but I mean, honestly, as a town manager, I really don't spend any money, I mean, it's more highway and wastewater and water, and then they come see me anyway.
Right.
Different terminology on these three categories, twenty five hundred may be approved by department heads, seven thousand may be approved by town manager, ten thousand must be approved.
Must be approved by the board.
I think there's some wiggle room in there, so, I don't think there's. We could expand it if you think so, Mr. Mills. But it's a maybe, maybe, must be.
I don't know, I have no problem with having Dave up to ten.
I don't.
I don't have a problem with that at all, and it's, you know.
Fine by me if you want my opinion, we do.
I can make that change.
Anything else on the appropriations policy? Purchasing policy, or personnel, any of these, anybody had issues on any of these, or?
Well, you wanna do them while we go?
Might as well.
So you guys are all okay with, I just wanna make sure that everyone's looked at the personnel policy, only cause I think that's the most important one.
I read the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't, it sounded very similar.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we accept the special appropriations, purchasing, personnel, trustees of public funds, investment, and fraud prevention policies.
Okay.
Second it.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Rules of procedure for select board review and consideration of approval?
Thank you very much for the show.
Yep.
See you one o'clock.
Yeah, May seventh.
May seventh, alright. Not the counterfeit one on Dona's land.
I'm not sure if I've got the real one or not, maybe somebody can straighten me out on that.
I'll straighten you out.
If anybody can do it, Bill can.
See you, Bill.
Bye.
Take care.
There was a detour at one point.
Oh, it went, well, no, they, they moved, they moved it all over.
Construction going on.
Yeah, no, there's.
It was just, somebody figured out, oh, this is shorter or this is easier.
Too muddy the other way.
Right, or it got muddy and they moved it over, you know, yeah, it, it didn't go all in one spot.
No.
Stay away from the homey trucks, is what they're.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, probably.
Could be.
Alright, what about the rules of procedure for select board review?
Same thing. All good.
All good.
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion to approve it.
Yep.
Did you just second that?
I made a motion.
Oh, you.
No, I made.
Oh, you did, oh, I, I said it before you did, that's what.
No, you didn't.
Go it.
Oh, my god.
So it's good.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Jeez.
The one that counts is one over there, right, and so I don't know which one she heard.
Yeah, we'll see next meeting.
Just to reiterate.
I'm gonna contest it if it's not right.
So folks know, like, these are all policies that are, they're, they're model policies from the Vermont League of Cities of towns who are unsure too, so they, they, you know, look at these and make sure that we're not going to get in trouble by adopting them, so.
Exactly.
It's not stuff we create in the office.
No. Good to point out.
And some of them were, were, are audit, well, the auditors, the auditor world would like to see them here too, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I realize I did skip two things of new business, the gearbox replacement.
So, I, this, this is, I'll pass this down, because this came in, uh, Tyler brought it to me a couple days ago. Um, the gearbox on, oh, I forgot what the piece of equipment was called now, it's the microstrainer down at, at wastewater, is 21 years old and water's getting into it, so they've been having some issues with it.
It's not good.
It's not good, no.
Sean was wondering if we could use ARPA funds to replace it. It's less than $5,000, it's four, yeah, it's 40, $4,900 to, to replace it.
This was in his original, um, request for ARPA funds for wastewater?
I, I don't know, Alicia, I didn't know what was there for that. Um, he, his worry was that if, you know, the 5,000 hit on his, on his, on his budget would be difficult to do this year, so.
Okay, I just, yeah.
I think most of this stuff was pure lines.
Yeah, 21 years old, that's pretty good for a gearbox.
That was pretty much all his stuff, his wishlist.
I know they looked at trying to see if they could replace seals on it, and that, that wasn't optional anymore. I'm gonna do, I'm guessing that's probably due to the age of it.
Yep. Well, it seems like a good use of ARPA funds.
I'll make a motion we use their ARPA funds to fund it.
Second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, and then the, uh, cut appointment of rep, which, um, we have had no takers, but Dave would be willing.
Only by.
That's so kind of you.
Default.
Thank you.
Well, I, I mean, actually, if it falls on Wednesdays, like, it's not a big deal, because I'm here anyway, so it kind of, kind of gives me something to do, you know?
You're just doing, oh, you're just doing it on Zoom?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they all, they do them all remote anyway. I don't think they've ever done an in-person meeting there, so.
Okay, yeah.
And I, by all means, if someone else really wants to do it, and we probably should have an alternate anyway, because I think they asked for one, I'd be more than happy to give it to someone else, so.
Okay.
But I think we need representation.
Oh, yeah.
Did Tony, he's like, um, did he give a date for being done, or is he done?
So, just tonight, it sounded like he was gonna stick around till maybe the, the May meeting and then, you know, be gone after that, so.
So you'll be the alternate for now until he's done?
Well, I don't know, he handed his letter and he sent it to me two days ago, so.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what, how it should be.
I'm sure that, I mean, we could keep him as the alternate, if, and then he's still there until he can't be, which is, which would be fine, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion?
I both that we appoint Dave as our representative to the cut. Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, anything on the orders?
I never saw them.
I know.
Are they in there?
Way at the.
Way at the end, because we are doing this at the end.
So, do we have one more thing in the pile for Bill Bowman?
Sorry?
Is there one more thing in there that you included?
No.
You mean for Rich?
Rich, Rich.
I'm sorry, Rich. Well, was that the health officer?
Health officer.
Oh, it's not, is it on?
On there, or did?
It's not on the agenda, but I already signed it and you signed it, so I think we're good.
I already done it.
I think it's just in there for your benefit. I think, yeah, I am quite like that, when we'd like the letters for water and sewer reps and all that.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
That's all it was.
Which, I actually got an email from, from Baird on the water thing, and he's like, I think that's a good move, I was gonna suggest it anyway, so.
Oh, good, I wasn't sure if anyone was gonna be upset.
No, I hope not.
They weren't worried, so that was, that was good to hear.
Yeah, no, really, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, did you want to see the orders, Joe?
I'm sure I did. So, here's, I'm just gonna pass the folder down.
Yeah, you can start passing stuff to sign.
Well, I have a question.
We have minutes to sign and everything, so.
Yeah.
Earl's for 1,400 for a record?
So that's for the international.
So how far they'd have to tow, how far do they have to tow for 1,400?
Clark's.
Holy crap.
So.
But we had, we had to pay for the towing for a brand-new truck that broke down?
That's huge.
Yeah, it is.
Well, towing ain't cheap, but.
No.
It would break down.
It's become a huge problem. So, when Chad went over to get the sander put back, the, the correct sander on it, as he was coming back over Killington, it started leaking fuel.
It's a brand-new truck.
This truck is problematic, and I, I'm not sure.
Is that how it ended up with us, do you think?
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm glad that I can say this was before my time.
No, our truck got wrecked on the way here.
Well, that's what, Chad and I were starting to wonder if that really happened.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
I think we gotta, I think we gotta make some phone calls on this.
Oh, yeah.
With that many troubles on it, we gotta start calling.
Well, there's thing called lemon law, and the sooner you get on it, the.
But I think lemon law has to be the same.
Same problem.
So this is. Yeah.
Right, so this is different problems over and over?
Well, so the sander was, we know the sander issue.
That was wrong.
Right.
But that, yeah.
And then this, this gas thing, so I, I don't know what the outcome was, if there was just lines that were a problem, or if it's a, I don't know.
How many miles they got on it?
Hundred. Yeah, maybe a hundred, I don't know.
Is it trashinal?
Yep.
That's your problem.
Oh, I know, don't even get me going, I'm trying to be quiet on this one, um, but.
Seems like somebody else would take responsibility for it.
Yeah, well, Fairfield didn't even look at it, and that's who we bought it from.
Jeez.
Wow.
So that makes wonder.
Wow. I think somebody has to make a phone call over there to Fairfield. I don't know if Chad wants to do it, or if you need to.
So, we, there's that Allegiance warranty on it, which, so this is the thing, that they're looking at the fuel, the fuel thing is under warranty, is warranty work, and Fairfield wouldn't do the warranty work, it had to go to Clark's.
What?
So.
So, okay, what, but wait, so Fairfield is a truck body company, correct?
No.
So what did they do? Buy this truck, put a body on it, then sell it to us?
I don't know what the deal was with this truck, I.
Well, no, but Fairfield isn't a truck dealer, are they? Allegiance is an international dealer, I know that.
And they have those, yeah.
Which is Clark's now.
I think they own Clark, yeah, right.
Well, Allegiance bought out Clark's.
I think they own Fairfield too now, don't they?
Oh, that I don't know.
Yeah.
I gotta help us.
I think somebody needs to make a phone call about this.
We were hoping this won't fall off the tow truck too, that was, near the flatbed, that was.
But we shouldn't be paying for 1,400.
No, it's crazy, I, it's.
Not on a truck with a hundred miles on it.
No, I wouldn't think so.
I know, that's nuts.
Wow.
Yeah.
That one, that one I don't think we should be.
I'd send the bill right to the people who bought it for.
Right, I don't think we should prove that.
Pretty good, guys.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I'd hate to see Earl's not.
Oh, I think we need.
Well, no, I, we'll, we'll end, no, let, let me, because I deal with Randy Clark.
Yeah.
Through school. Let me see if I can find out anything.
Okay. I don't mind making calls. I, I got the warranty. Well, remember we looked at the warranty earlier on too, about to see if it covered, I think it was emissions and stuff?
Emissions, right.
It didn't, it wasn't there, so Chad and I even talked about it, like, no, what's the point? But.
That's why I decided not to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I don't know, I'm, I'm worried. I know Chad had mentioned something too, that he was, he was using it for winter maintenance out on, I think, over on West Creek or something, and it, that, like, totally lost power, and he had to do like five miles an hour all the way back, and then it was fine, so I, I don't know what's going on with, with it.
What year is that?
Brand new.
Brand new.
Brand new. That's why, with all the chip problems that everybody's been having, they're just throwing whatever they have available into vehicles. A lot of new cars are going back with recall problems, all kinds of problems, because they're just throwing in whatever chips they can find.
So I think someone's gonna call them on it.
Yeah.
Somebody ought to, well, we can see what we can do with it. I would hope so.
Sounds like.
So what's your recommendation? We pay Earl's, but we follow?
I think, yeah, I think we should pay Earl's.
Well, no, we need to pay Earl's, but we need to try to get reimbursed for that cost.
Yeah, right, right. It should follow their warranty.
Let's make sure we don't let that go.
Yeah.
And let it get lost.
Yeah.
We'll be sure to buy another vehicle from them.
So, all right, so I, I just, before.
When you pay these, sometimes they forget about it.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I'm, I want to make sure we chase it, so I'm sorry, go ahead, dude.
So, I want to get, so did, we, we bought the truck off Fairfield with a body on it, correct?
That's what I remember.
That's what I was told.
So, because, I mean, normally before, we've, we've bought the truck off Kenworth, and then we bought the body off of whoever.
Whoever.
Right, so this one was a package deal that we bought?
That's what I was told, that there was a truck all ready to go.
They found a truck or something, because.
Right, because it wasn't the original one we ordered.
Right.
Right.
Our truck got smashed coming to be delivered.
Now, was that truck going to Fairfield or Allegiance? No, 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 what, I, I mean, I want to get my facts straight when I make this call.
Why don't we pull the slip? Let's have the slip hold.
Pull out the stuff.
Why don't we just get the slip?
The truck was told to Clark's.
No, 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 he's talking about.
I want to, I want to know the history, the history of this truck.
Let's just pull the slip.
Yeah.
Then we'll know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I want to know what I'm talking about, if I'm gonna make this call.
Take the slip with you.
Yeah.
Need the information. What the hell?
Yeah, pull up the original.
Somebody should be responsible for that, it's too new.
That's the only one I had of.
Yeah, okay.
Get some stuff in. Why don't we start this, Dave?
Oh, sure, sure.